Okay. Is everyone ready? All right, good evening, everyone, and thank you all for bearing with me tonight as I fill in for Chair Gould while he is out of the country. I won't even try to be as funny as he is, but otherwise, I will try my best to fill in his shoes. And since we had a little extra space up here, we wanted to welcome Ms. Rice up to the dais, and I hope you enjoy the view from up here. I'd like to call the meeting to order. October 8th, 2024, regular school board meeting. Ms. Goodell, would you please call the roll?
Ah, yes. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Henderson is not here. Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Silverman?
Here.
And Ms. Tice?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodell. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we are in Section 1.04, Adoption of the Agenda. Can I please have a motion? Anyone? Mr. Anderson?
I move that the Board adopt the agenda as presented.
Can I please have a second? Ms. Murphy? Ms. Murphy? Yes, okay. Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? A great motion passes. All right, I'd like to move on to Section 2, Spotlight Team FCCPS, and Item 2.01, Local History Curriculum. And Dr. Noonan, I will turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. Good evening, everybody, and thank you all for being here. Glad to see you, the masses of you here. This evening, we are very fortunate, though, to have with us two really important people in our school system. First is Jamie Osborne, who is one of our outstanding teachers at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, and Julie McCrina, who is our Director of Instruction in the Office of Instruction, to talk this evening about our local history curriculum. This is, well, I won't, I won't say any more than this, but I think we're going to start with a video, and then both of our folks here this evening would like to say a few words as well. So with that, I'll, I'll let it roll, and then we'll hear from them.
Hi, my name is Sehsha Darshan, and I'm a sophomore at Meridian High School. I'm so excited to be here today, as I have the pleasure of bringing a spotlight to an amazing initiative here in FCCPS. The initiative, known as the Inclusive Local History Curriculum, is an effort to bring an inclusive lens to the history of this amazing little city. Started in 2022, FCCPS staff has engaged in research, interviews, and lesson planning, and is ready to publicly share some of their work. Today, we will hear from some of those amazing educators. First, we will hear from Ms. Jamie Osborne, World History Teacher at Mary Ellen Henderson, as she gives an overview of the local history work that includes lessons about Tinner Hill. We will then hear from Ms. Laura McNamara, Kindergarten Teacher at Mount Daniel, Ms. Lauren Lauer, Advanced Academic Specialist at Oak Street, and finally, Mr. Adam Rivera, History Teacher at Meridian. So, without further ado, Ms. Osborne, go ahead and kick us off.
The local history program started two years ago in a very interesting way. We actually went out into the community and interviewed parents, teachers, students, community members, and even leadership, as a means to solicit from them what they thought the mission, vision, and goals of this program should be. And we learned three really important things. First, it was important to stakeholders that the local history program be natural, meaning that it would dovetail with what teachers were already doing in the classroom. Two, they wanted it to be organic, in the sense that it would be driven by teachers themselves. And three, that it would be aligned to the IB program, meaning that when we present issues from a global context, we have to make sure that we bring it down to a local level, and so this program does that, in fact. And I'm really proud to report that over this past spring, we actually received a grant from the state as a means to drive some of the curriculum work, and you're going to be hearing about that from some of our curriculum developers themselves.
Sometimes people really underestimate the ability of young children to understand big concepts and historical events, but as a 13-year veteran at Mount Daniel, I know that the opposite is true. Children really can understand historical events, and this local history curriculum has really enabled us to teach, to teach local history in a way that is embedded in the things that we're already teaching. And I am most excited because, over the summer, I got to meet with Marion Selby, who is the first Black woman to integrate what used to be George Mason High School, and to hear her story, and I'm going to get to tell her story to my students and to Mount Daniel students, and hopefully to generations of students to come.
Here at Oak Street Elementary, we're learning about our local history curriculum by exploring the Falls Church, which our city is named for. We're also acting as enquirers and learning about famous Black Americans who helped to form our city.
Okay, local history has big value in a US history classroom, in all classrooms in general, especially in individual and society's classrooms. For instance, local history is a history that helps students feel empowered, namely because they can see themselves in the actual history. I think there's a tendency sometimes for people to study and to think about history as something that is always happening from the top to the bottom, and by that, we mean, like, change is happening, like, with big national players, and, like, smaller local players are only affected by that. But a lot of the history would suggest, especially in recent times, that more smaller local changes is what actually impacts the bigger changes. So when students are able to see how their communities, especially Falls Church, who has a very active role in things like civil rights history, they're able to feel like they're empowered, like they can make a difference and make positive changes. So local history is very good for that reason. In addition, there's a huge culturally responsive element to local history, so, from the community lens in general, but also it can appeal to different ranges of students, many diversities. So like at the Eden Center, we have a large immigrant population from Vietnam, which is thriving here in our community, and in that manner, we are able to reach out and connect with many different types of students.
Wow, what an amazing initiative. We'd like to extend a huge thank you to our staff, students, and community members that have supported this program.
So at this time, we would welcome up Julie.
Hi, I'm Rob Carey.
Sorry, go ahead, Julie and Jamie.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, thank you, Dr. Noonan, and good to see all of you at the school board. Thank you for having us tonight. We are excited to share with you just a little bit snippet of what we've been working on currently with our local history curriculum. It has been two years now that we have collaborated with several community members, developing a K through 12 curriculum focus. We would like to thank Mr. Henderson and other community members who have given us their input and shared their experiences with us, gave us background information, and worked with our curriculum developers, as you met and saw here in the video. We are also excited because last year, we piloted several of our lessons and embedded them in the classroom social studies lessons that were already created, and made it a seamless effort, and we've had several classes now say that it folds in naturally, and it's a very easy way to find the connections within the community. So lastly, I just would like to welcome and introduce Jamie Osborne. She is not only a world history teacher, but she has been an integral part to this whole process of world history. She's worked with various teachers and community members to pull all of this work together, to create really authentic lessons for our students to make those connections and be embedded into the curriculum. So we are super excited and would like to welcome Jamie here to the podium and thank her for her leadership.
Thank you, Julie. So, a couple of updates. This past spring, Ms. McCrina and I met with our curriculum developers to check in with the progress of their lesson plan development, and these curriculum developers finished their second iteration of lesson planning using a checklist and incorporated their final product into a division template, which was subsequently archived into our FCCPS shared drive. And this work was supported in part by a grant that we received from Virginia Humanities in the amount of $5,000, and it's important to note, as Julie said, that this work is now being implemented in the classrooms across the division. Secondly, in the last week, a few teachers and I met to develop the Secondary Scope and Sequence, which is aligned to our Individual and Society's Scope and Sequence document. This document identifies the SOLs, and essential understandings for each unit, as well as IB key concepts, so it allows us to see the vertical articulation of the curriculum, as well as to identify where we have gaps. And later this month, we're going to do the same process so that we create the same scope and sequence for our elementary level program, too, as well. Moving forward, I will be making some contacts in the community to continue to develop our curator contact list, and this is important because a lot of the history that we want to incorporate is less well-known, and our goal is really to make the history more accessible. Hence, Mary Beth Connolly and I will be meeting with a few others to brainstorm ideas for future programming, including ideas for assemblies, guest speakers, and even possibly field trips. And this is important because one of the things that I learned from the outreach that I did two years ago is that the knowledge is really in the group, and so my job is about connecting those who hold the resources in the community with our teachers in the classroom. Lastly, I'm really looking forward to all the possibilities that lay ahead, and one exciting endeavor that came out of the joint conversations that we had with other curriculum developers last week is to begin crafting our own local understandings, meaning we have our essential understandings for history and social science from the VDOE, but as we begin to recognize themes, as we continue to do some more lesson planning, we hope that we're able to create local understandings as a means to leverage student understanding about this really special community. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, yes. Give you a round of applause. Before you go, there might be some questions, so come on back. I do want to just give a shout out to these, to these folks. When this sort of kernel of an idea started several years ago, one of the really great things we were able to do was to be able to say sort of emphatically, yes, let's figure out how to do it, and let's leverage some people, and of course, it has to be Jamie that does it, because she's such an expert in curriculum writing and, and teaching, and so we're really proud of her. I did want to just thank publicly again, I know he was mentioned, but Ed Henderson, for his input. Mr. Henderson was invited this evening, but something must have come up. We were hoping to recognize him in, in person as well, but want to thank him for his input as well. So I turn it over to you, Chair, if there are any questions.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Ms. Osborne and Ms. McCrina. Any questions or comments from the board? Chair, Henderson.
I think it's fantastic that we're incorporating local history into our curriculum. It was one of the things that I was hoping we would do when we began the renaming of the schools in that process, right? Because it's all that history matters. And if I, if I understood you correctly, because I know you spoke a lot about kind of the attachment to the curricular structure, clearly you're expert in that, it sounds like, from a layperson's standpoint, you're just integrating local history into both the curricula and the extracurricular activities that happen during the school day, and so it'll just be folded in in a really natural way, as opposed to, okay, now we're going to stop and look at this, right?
Do you have one to give an example?
Yeah, so our mission has always been to do just that. We don't want it to be an add-on. We want it to be incorporated in a natural and organic way. So natural being that it highlights what the teachers are probably already doing in the classroom, but adds that sort of local context, and organic that it comes from the teachers themselves, so our curriculum developers have meetings where they sit down with the teachers and they ask them, you know, what's going on in the classroom? Tell me about the standards, and then together they ideate, so that, yeah, it's seamless and natural.
I think that's awesome. I think our students are so lucky to have that and have that approach, because it makes it inclusive and normalizes it, as opposed to it being, and something else that doesn't really matter. So I applaud y'all for that approach. It's wonderful.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to also say thank you for the fantastic presentation and all of the hard work and the thoughtfulness that went into creating this curriculum. It's been really exciting to watch it unfold over the years, and I completely agree with Ms. Henderson. I just think it's so powerful, and the students have this meaningful content, content that makes the learning relevant. It roots them in their everyday setting. They're the ones walking around town, and it really makes, like, everywhere they go really come alive to them, and it just gives an authentic understanding, I think, of our community. So I just think it's an amazing example of the best of Falls Church City and IB perspective, putting it into practice, and benefits the students and our entire community. So thank you.
Okay, I need to stop turning off my mic, because I have to, like, use it a lot. All right, we're going to move to Section 3, Recognitions and Reports. Dr. Noonan, I'll turn it back over to you for Section 3.01, the 2024 BSBA Media Honor Roll.
Yes, thank you so much. As the school board may or may not remember, because a lot of things happened throughout the year, we recently nominated some really outstanding journalists to be members of our Virginia School Board Association's Honor Roll, and this evening, we'd like to recognize, first, the Falls Church News Press and owner Nick Benton for his extraordinary work on behalf of the City of Falls Church and the schools, but also, for the second year in a row, we've gotten agreement after a little bit of a push with the Virginia School Boards Association to recognize a student publication, and, and I'm excited to say that tonight, we have Molly Moore and Abby Crespin with us this evening, who are both editors-in-chief from The Lasso, and appreciate them. Unfortunately, their sponsor, Mr. Bo Faye, was unable to join us tonight, but we would really welcome all three of our really outstanding authors, editors, and reporters to join us on the dais, so, for a picture. So maybe we can start with Mr. Benton, the owner of the Falls Church News Press, and then we can move on to Molly and Abby. So maybe we can come down and give them their certificates and get a picture.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, and congratulations again to our Media Honor Roll awardees. Moving on to Section 3.02, Resolution 2024 Bullying Prevention Month. Ms. Henderson, could you please read the resolution?
Certainly. Falls Church City Public Schools, Resolution 20-24, a resolution recognizing October 2024 as Bullying Prevention Month. Whereas bullying in schools is a serious issue that affects the safety and well-being of students, impacting 14% of all schools across the nation, leading to negative impacts on mental health, academic performance, and overall school climate across the nation and in the state of Virginia. And whereas the recognition that the prevalence of bullying indicates that over 20% of all youth in the United States have been involved in bullying each year, requires a collective commitment from educators, students, families, and the community to foster a safe and supportive environment for all. And whereas October 2024 is nationally recognized as Bullying Awareness Month, aimed at educating students, staff, and parents about the impacts of bullying and promoting prevention strategies. And whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and in cyberspace, and can happen in many places, on and off school grounds, and whereas Falls Church City Public Schools is dedicated to creating a culture of respect and inclusivity where every student feels safe and valued, and whereas engaging in open discussions about bullying and its consequences can empower students to stand against bullying behavior and support their peers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City Public School Board declares October 2024 as Bullying Awareness Month in our division. Be it further resolved that the Falls Church City Public Schools will implement programs and activities throughout the month to promote awareness, educate the community, and encourage positive behavior among students. These may include providing resources and training for students, staff, and parents about recognizing, preventing, and addressing bullying, utilizing posters, social media, and announcements to share information on the impacts of bullying and how to report it, encouraging student-led groups that promote kindness, inclusion, and peer support, partnering with other organizations to provide resources and support for anti-bullying efforts across our schools. Be it further resolved that the Falls Church City Public School Board encourages all members of the school community to participate in these initiatives and to foster a culture of respect and kindness throughout the year.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Now to seek a motion for Resolution 20-24. Get up.
Keep going.
Thank you, Ms.
I move that the school board approve and adopt Resolution 20-24 Bullying Prevention Month as presented.
Can I have a second? All right, thank you, Ms. Murphy. All in favor, say yes. Any opposed? Thank you, and motion passes. Moving on to Section 4, Public Comments and Requests. In accordance with school board policy BDDH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. However, those needing a reasonable accommodation or who need interpretation may have extended time. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. Be disposition of requests. Ms. Goodell, do we have any public comment notices submitted?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any submitted written public comment notices?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Goodell. Now we will move into Section 5, Closed Meeting, and can I seek a motion for Item 5.1, Closed Meeting, please? Ms. Murphy?
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the Board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, staff change in positions, staff separation, post-family medical leave, leave of absence, and advisory committee appointments, resignations.
Thank you. All in favor, say yes. I believe this is going to be an extra short one, right, Dr. Noonan?
Yes, we're going to be very brief, so rather than adjourn to the room, we can actually go back into the back hallway and, and meet there.
Great, so we will be back momentarily. Thank you. Okay, welcome back, everyone. Thank you. I'd like to seek a motion for Item 5.3, Reconvene to Open Meeting. Can I seek a motion to reconvene, please? Mr. Anderson?
I move that the Board reconvene to open meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Can I have a second, please? Ms. Silverman? Thank you, Ms., sorry, thank you, Ms. Silverman. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you, and motion passes. Okay, Section 6, Meeting Opening, and we move to, oh, we're at Section 6, sorry, we moved to 6.01, Certify the Closed Meeting. Can I please seek a motion to certify the closed meeting? Ms. Silverman?
Whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Can I have a second, please? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you. Ms. Goodell, could you please do a roll call?
Yes. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Silverman?
Yes.
And Ms. Tice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodell. Section 7, Consent Agenda. I would like to solicit a unanimous consent for Item 7.1, Personnel Items for the Consent Agenda. Okay, thank you, and the Consent Agenda passes. Okay, moving right along to Section 8, Business Action and Information, starting with Item 8.1, Strategic Plan Update. And Dr. Noonan, I will turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you, and good evening again. Tonight, we're very fortunate to have our Director of Community Outreach and Strategic Planning with us this evening, Mary Beth Connolly. Mary Beth has been doggedly helping us sort of monitor the progress towards our goals of the strategic plan, and this is our third year of being in our strategic plan, and we've made some very significant gains, and one of the challenges in making these gains is always trying to communicate out, so that our community, our staff, and the board all know sort of what our, what our work continues to be and how it ties to our strategic plan. So tonight, Ms. Connolly is going to share where we are sort of in the year three of the strategic plan, and a little bit of information about some of our progress. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Connolly, and I know at the end, she'd be welcome to ask any, answer any questions that you may have.
Indeed. Thanks, Dr. Noonan. Good evening, Vice Chair Tice and School Board. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to talk about the strategic plan. I sent a message out to all staff recently, and I said, while most of you don't think about the strategic plan every day, I do, so I'm doing all this thinking for you, and they're doing all the work to enact the strategic plan. So there are a few changes and updates this year that I just wanted to share with you as we head into the year. This is the place many, many organizations, whether there are other private schools that are running programs and are building community activities. There's extensive use in terms of all of these things.
That's great to hear. These four items, how were they identified as the priorities for this year?
So these four items are all items that had come up in terms of previous requests. The scoreboard has been something that the athletic boosters have been extensively working on for many years in terms of their advocacy and outreach. They have been both fundraising and talking about how it needs to be replaced. I'm sure some of you remember, although I like to not remember, the times when the scoreboard hasn't worked during games, which is very difficult, and that has happened on more than one occasion. So that has certainly brought that up in terms of the conversations and all of the questions about doing that. We were fortunate, as part of the high school project, to put in a new scoreboard for softball. And then we also were able to fund with the board's support, a new scoreboard for baseball. So this is the only scoreboard that hasn't been replaced. And part of our work with the boosters is we would replace it with the same kind, which would give us the ability to use the same controller over multiple boards, right? It really helps in terms of that maintenance, ongoing use, and everyone's understanding of how the equipment works. The genie lift is something we actually really wanted when we built the high school. We knew when we built the high school that in addition to having the lights that were hard to reach in the middle school, we needed it for the high school. At that point in time, when we started to look at the genie lift, we were actually having problems in terms of supply chain, and it was on our list of wishes that we couldn't fund at the time. So that too has been a pretty extensive, long-going request.
I appreciate all the clarification. It does sound like from all the explanation and context that these are important investments that not only will make our facilities more appealing to more community groups to use and to continue helping support our school funds that way, but also be really beneficial to our students and staff on a daily basis.
Ms. Silverman?
Thank you for that presentation. I do apologize. As you can see, there are five votes for everything, and there are six board members. I am the absent voter. But in general, I do defer to the administration on what we should be funding, so I don't think that my answer would be changing anything. So instead of having more of an opinion on things, I just, I want to understand things. Why, so I guess my first question is why were these funding items chosen over many of the others that we saw at the end of the work session at the last meeting? There's student desk and chair refreshment, there's...
Staff or Advisory Board have asked for, for these, that would be limited by the use of these funds for this purpose.
I'm not aware of any other needs that the daycare advisory board has asked that these would get in the way of. I know the daycare advisory board is really going to be monitoring the fees and looking at the impact of the new sliding scale that improved or enhanced the benefits in terms of support to families with lower income. And I know the advisory board is meeting Monday, so I'm sure they'll be discussing these, right, and seeing if they have any other input for items.
And I think I know the answer to this, having had kids in the daycare program, but just for community, the, both the grass playground at Mount Daniel and the playground at Oak Street are things regularly used by the daycare program, right?
Correct. Thank you very much for that question. Yes, both of those items are very much used by daycare. And funding in the daycare fund is funds generated by fees that parents have paid for daycare. So we have always used that funding to do things that enhance and improve the daycare program.
Thank you.
Uh huh. If there are no other questions on daycare, I'll move on to community use funding. So the first thing in terms of community use funding, the question we asked was, should we be able to use community use fund balance to purchase a genie lift? And that's a lift that would allow us to replace light bulbs in the gymnasium and reach things that are up higher. Gym lights are the things that we most frequently change. And those responses were, one, yes, I support, and four, I defer to leadership. And then the next item regarding community use funding is the ADA playground path at Mount Daniel. And we have a very spectacular student who's at the middle school who had come to school leadership and advocated that we put an ADA pathway inside the playground at Oak Street in terms of ensuring that if children are in wheelchairs, their wheelchairs won't get stuck in the mulch. And we have, with the board's tremendous support, previously funded that path at Oak Street. And this funding request would be to put a similar path at Mount Daniel. So it's a poured rubber surface that would allow people who are mobility challenged to more easily get to playground equipment without getting stuck in the mulch. And in this case, there was one, a support, and four, defer to FCCPS leadership. And then the next item is the gym lights at Mary Ellen Henderson. This request was to replace the lights inside the gym at Mary Ellen Henderson with LED lights. And there were five, I defer to FCCPS leadership. And we received a great, great question regarding the lights, which was with the reasonableness of this cost. And we should have been very clear in the description, and we're not, that the cost isn't just to replace the light bulbs, but we need to replace every single fixture in the gym. So there are nearly 50 fixtures, so that's what accounts for that significant cost. And then the last item related to the community services fund is the scoreboard at the stadium field. Our athletic boosters have been diligently raising funds and have raised approximately 50% of the cost of replacing the scoreboard at the athletic, at the athletic stadium field at the high school. So in terms of the responses here, there were three, yes, I support, and two, I defer to FCCPS leadership. Regarding the scoreboard, we did receive feedback in terms of the scoreboard is seen by our community. It's used by thousands of visiting teams, spectators. For those of you who have seen the scoreboard, it does look very poor in its current condition. I know it has weeds growing around it, but in addition, if you look at it, it's very faded, difficult to read, and it really does not currently fit in with the modern aesthetics of our high school. So any questions on community services, community use funding?
I had, I had a comment about the ADA pathway at, on the Oak Street playground. And I just wanted to agree with you that that student who was advocating is exceptional. They are wonderful. And I remember this coming up at the Special Education Advisory Committee. And I just wanted to say thank you for being so responsive to his, his and his family's concerns and, and solving this problem. I think it's just a wonderful opportunity for the student voice to be heard and the committees to help advocate. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Henderson?
Hi.
Can you help educate me for context again on what the community use fund is, where the money comes from, and whether there are any constraints on how we use those funds?
Yes, thank you very much for the question. So inside our community services fund, we have, community use is one of those components. Daycare is also included in that same fund, but we're specifically talking with these requests about community use funding. That funding is generated from fees that we charge outside organizations who use our school buildings and our fields. And we have different tiers of rental fees. They are much lower, of course, if you're a nonprofit in the city as compared to a for-profit agency outside of the city. And we charge fees to those organizations, and we generally use those fees to help us upkeep our fields, our equipments, and our buildings, as well as to pay for the additional security that we have on hand and the additional support, whether it's staffing the buildings or cleaning as a result of those activities.
And all of these, is there any constraints on how we use that money? Meaning, do we need, are we obligated under some sort of regulation to plow it back into things the community uses, the way with the daycare has that logical connection?
So, thank you. Community use is part of our community services fund, just like daycare. That is a special revenue fund where the proceeds from that fund or that activity need to be used to support that activity.
So my next question, which you could probably anticipate, is all of these items on this list, stadium field, gym lights, et cetera, are things that are areas of the campuses utilized by the community, correct?
Correct. All of these things are extensively used by the community, correct?
And do you have a sense, I have a sense from visiting campuses, but do you have a sense of how often community members are using our facilities, these, these facilities in particular?
Yes, so we have community members in our facilities seven days a week and nearly the entire year long. When you look at community use specifically at the secondary campus in terms of these athletic fields, rec and parks, and we have a memorandum of understanding, and after the schools use our fields, they are our first group that gets rights to use the field. And then we do rent it out to private companies, whether it's Fairfax Athletics. We have a semi-pro soccer team that's playing on our field and using our scoreboard. And many, many organizations, whether there are other private schools that are running programs and are building community activities, there's extensive use in terms of all of these things.
That's great to hear. These four items, they were identif, how were they identified as the priorities for this year?
So these four items are all items that had come up in terms of previous requests. The scoreboard has been something that the athletic boosters have been extensively working on for many years in terms of their advocacy and outreach. They have been both fundraising and talking about how it needs to be replaced. I'm sure some of you remember, although I like to not remember, the times when the scoreboard hasn't worked during games, which is very difficult, and that has happened on more than one occasion. So that has certainly brought that up in terms of the conversations and all of the questions about doing that. We were fortunate, as part of the high school project, to put in a new scoreboard for softball. And then we also were able to fund with the board's support, a new scoreboard for baseball. So this is the only scoreboard that hasn't been replaced. And part of our work with the boosters is we would replace it with the same kind, which would give us the ability to use the same controller over multiple boards, right? It really helps in terms of that maintenance, ongoing use, and, and everyone's understanding of how the equipment works. The genie lift is something we actually really wanted when we built the high school. We knew when we built the high school that in addition to having the lights that were hard to reach in the middle school, we needed it for the high school. At that point in time, when we started to look at the genie lift, we were actually having problems in terms of supply chain, and it was on our list of wishes that we couldn't fund at the time. So that too has been a pretty extensive, long-going request.
Appreciate all the clarification. It does sound like from the, all the explanation and context that these are important investments that not only will make our facilities more appealing to more community groups to use and to continue helping support our school funds that way, but also be really beneficial to our students and staff on a daily basis.
Ms. Silverman?
Thank you for that presentation. I do apologize. As you can see, there are five votes for everything, and there are six board members. I am the absent voter. But in general, I do defer to the administration on what we should be funding, so I don't think that my answer would be, would be changing anything. So instead of having more of an opinion on things, I just, I want to understand things. Why, so I guess my first question is, why were these funding items chosen over many of the others that we saw at the end of the work session at the last meeting? There's student desk and chair refreshments, there's, 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 I think there were a few things that were not listed on this one, but were listed on the last one.
Sure. So when we look at these items that were first, we first talked about the daycare fund, and now we've been talking about community use fund. When we looked at what items were being recommended to be paid for using operating fund ending balance as compared to daycare or community use, we really looked at the items and determined, where do we have a logical fit, where our special revenue funds, both daycare and community use, could help contribute to projects that would really benefit them? So that was the first lens. So all of the things that I've walked through so far are things where those programs are really getting tremendous benefit from replacing these items, right? So in the next section, after we talk about one other item, we'll get to all of those items in the operating fund. And then we can talk about, in, in all of those cases, there are items where it's not logical. Like, it wouldn't make sense for the daycare fund, for example, to replace student desks and chairs because they're not using them as part of their program, right? So that's really the first lens when we looked at this, about how we were funding items.
Okay, that makes sense. And so I guess my next, my final question then is, all of those items that were on that list from last time, are they all on, I didn't do a comparison, but are they all on, somewhere on this presentation this evening?
Yes, everything that was on the previous list will end up being covered as we work through the slide deck.
Okay. And can you remind me how much we have in, again, in one-time funds right now?
So in, so we just walked through, first daycare, and the fund balance in terms of daycare was $620,415. In terms of the community use fund balance, again, after we've accounted for encumbrances and all of our obligations in FY25, their fund balance is standing at $730,888. And then when we look at the school operating fund, go back one more, after we account for the $449,000 that we'll receive as part of our revenue sharing agreement from the general government, our fund balance was 2.1 million.
Okay, so it's 2.1 with a, with a estimated funding need of two points, almost 2.8.
So as we walk through all of these items, can I get to that question in just a minute?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And again, I mostly defer to, to all of you on, on what should be funded, so my answers probably wouldn't have changed anything. Thank you.
All right. One of the next questions we asked in the survey is additional requested support from city council. So when we look at the fund balance at the end of this year, as Dr. Noonan indicated, the fund balance amount that we received at the end of this fiscal year of $449,000, while a substantial amount of money, is significantly less than we received in prior years. And when you look at the general government's fund balance for the end of this year, it also represents a small portion of the overall fund balance that they had available, right? And because a large amount of their fund balance came from items outside of our revenue sharing agreement, like interest income, that funding was not slated to come to the schools. But the city manager had indicated, and it was discussed at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, that potentially the schools could make a request to receive some additional support from their one-time ending balance. So we had asked the question of the school board, of all of the one-time requests, which should we consider asking the city council to consider funding? And in this case, there, people could vote for more than one item, so that's why you'll see more than five responses on this item. But there were two for the stadium field house refurbishment. There were four for asking for support with the electric buses. Those are the EPA grant that we received, where we would receive $200,000 per bus, up to two buses. So we would need $400,000 in local funding to match the $400,000 grant. There was funding here for hybrid vans that we use to transport students who are outplaced to other programs. There were two responses there, and one response for support with additional security cameras. And then we did receive some questions, feedback related to these questions. Again, talking about deferring to leadership team, and then items aligning with city council's mission to become a greener city. And that's part of our government operations energy action plan. And then also hopes that the operating fund could then be set aside to complete the stadium Any questions on the items for city council? Okay. So for the school operating fund, at the last work session, the discussion was to the superintendent, could the leadership team prioritize all of the items that we had for requests and determine which of them are kind of above the line and which of them are below the line? So when we look at the highest priority items that I will cover next, all of the items in this section total 1.5 million. So once we account for that support for the general government, all of these items could be funded, and it would bring our fund balance down to about $900,000 that could be used to help support the FY26 budget or for future priorities. And then all of these, if they are funded by the board, will bring our fund balance below the 2%, which is in the board's policy. So in terms of these items, for each item, we asked the school board to rank, and there were 11 items in the highest priority grouping.
Sorry, Ms. Michael, to interrupt you. I just, we needed a clarification before you got too, too far.
Yep, so I'm, I'm already confused, so I thought I'd pause before we get further in. Yes, we're looking at slide, one before this one.
This one?
Yeah. So just to make sure I understand, when you say with support from the general government for one of the items, do we have a sense of what that amount of support is? I'm trying to understand how we get to the 1.5 and, and how likely it is we're going to have to go through this type of, of ranking, just trying to understand the context that we're operating in.
Yes, no, thank you. When you look at these items that were the highest ranked items in terms of requesting support from city council, the stadium field house refurbishment is $600,000. The electric buses were $400,000, and the hybrid vans to transport outplay students were $100,000, right? So kind of using the middle of that and the one with the highest number of votes, $400,000. If we make the assumption that if the general government funded the electric buses, when we look at all of the other items on the list, they would total that 1.5 million.
And do we have some reason to believe that $400,000 is what the general government, excuse for the question for you, Dr. Noonan, is what the general government is likely to contribute, whether it's the electric buses or something else we ask for?
We don't necessarily have a number that they have indicated that they would be interested, but they, in my conversations with the city manager, I got the sense that if there was a project or, or something, and it sounded singular to me, that we wanted to take a look at, to perhaps ask the council support for, we could bring something forward. So that was why we wanted to kind of get a sense from you all, what do you think might be the right thing to bring forward? We could have brought forward the stadium field because it's the most expensive, and that might have made the most sense from a financial strategic perspective, but from a, you know, partnership perspective, we thought that the electric buses, and, and it looks like, you know, based on the, that might make the most sense because it also adds into that sustainability plan. I didn't get a feel that there would be much support for more than a, an, an item, but that doesn't mean that we don't necessarily have to stick with one item. We could ask for more, and, and if we get it, great. I think the main thing for us is, and it's more of a timing issue than anything, is that by the first of November, we have to make a commitment to buy these electric buses and have the money committed. So that was, that was one of the reasons that we were glad to see it come up high from you.
And is your recommendation as staff that, because I was the one who said I don't have enough information to be able to make a recommendation? Is the staff recommendation that we ask the city government to fund the electric buses?
It is, yes. And what you'll see now are the things that the staff, not myself, but the staff that I asked to put items above the, you're going to see all the things that are above the line now. And if we funded all the things above the line and we were able to get the city council to pay for the $400,000, that would be $1.5 million, and we'd have enough to do all the things above the line at this point.
And philosophically speaking, I know you told us this last work session, but I want to ask it again, can you explain why this particular set of funds that we've been talking about cannot be used for ongoing recurring?
Sure. It's a great question. The reason that they, so, so the best way that I can describe it is, think about your own home, your home finances. This is essentially like a savings account. It's an account that we have that's a set aside, that's year-end balance, that we get some from the general government, and then we have some for ourselves. If we were to start paying, for example, all of our electric bills out of our savings account, ultimately, our savings account would be depleted, and we wouldn't be able to continue to pay for our electric because we don't have any recurring funds to pay for that. That's why that operational budget versus the year-end balance is really important. The operational budget is the money that's recurring. So ultimately, what happens is, we, we spend recurring funds on things like electric and, and bills and teacher pay and, and things like that because they keep coming up over and over and over again. But this is an opportunity for us to buy some things that perhaps we've been waiting to purchase, that we can spend some of our savings account on at this point because we, we have the money, and even if we spent all 1.5 million of what we've got, we'd still have about $900,000 in the bank.
And then that $900,000, we keep it in the bank for?
We'll, we'll do this again next year, where we'll look at those things that perhaps we weren't able to get, get this year, but, but maybe take another look at them next year because we'll have the $900,000 in, in savings essentially, in, in one-time money. And then at this time next year, we'll do the closeout of this year's books, and we may have, through salary lapse and some other things, also have some additional one-time money to add to that.
But saving that $900,000 ensures we at least have some one-time money next year, regardless of what happens.
And, and for this year also, because if something were to happen where we, you know, let's say two of our white fleet cars went down, and we absolutely had to buy cars, and we spent down our savings to zero, we wouldn't be able to buy any cars. So it gives us some flexibility in, in the event that something really happens and we have a need.
Thank you for that clarification. I have one more for you, and then we get back to Ms. Michaels. I would expect that some of these things on this list come with recurring maintenance costs.
Correct.
And so I'm just curious about the economic impact of those. If we go ahead and spend the 1.5 million and we're able to do everything we want to do, which would be amazing, what the recurring maintenance costs are, and if that would be, if that would cause a problem for going forward budgets?
Yeah, we, I think, and I may defer to Kristen on this one, Ms. Michael on this one, but the maintenance costs are a part of our operational budget. And so, for example, when we look at, let me just pull it up, if we were to move forward with the hybrid, hybrid fleet, we would be replacing others, so the maintenance costs would be sort of one for one. The maintenance may go up because of the type of vehicle it is, but we, we also account for that in the regular budget process. And you'll see in the next works, the next item, where we're adding a little bit of money into the budget for next year to account for inflation and some additional costs for contracts. And those contracts are maintenance contracts, things like that.
Thank you.
So in this next section, we asked the school board to rank all of the items in this highest priority group. So in case we didn't receive any additional support from the general government, we would have them in order. So I'll just quickly go through each of these, and then I do have a summary at the end. So in terms of the stadium field house refurbishment, I mean, you can see that there was one first, second, and third choice, as well as the 10th and 11th. We did receive this question, our feedback regarding the field house, right? Certainly, the field house is very important in terms of the concession funding that is generated by the athletic boosters. The comment here also truly talks to some of the real reason we need to upgrade and replace this field house, which is related to the toilets overflowing. I know many of us have walked through when the floor is wet in that facility. There are many, many, many problems related to that building in terms of windows being difficult to open, many other components. When we look at the electric buses, we had two first-choice votes, one second, and fourth, and one 10th. Hybrid vans to transport outplay students, there was a third place, fifth place, sixth place, ninth place, and 11th place. The marquee sign for the secondary campus, one first choice, one sixth choice, two eighth choices, and one 11th choice. We did get feedback regarding the marquee sign. It is a great placemaking element, this comment says, particularly as the additional development is going on and helping people locate the high school. For the technology security monitoring, this is having an external company help us with monitoring for security, two fourth choices, two eighth choices, and a 10th choice. And then in terms of digitizing staff and student files, in terms of this, there was one third choice, one fifth choice, two seventh, and a ninth. This really is digitizing students' cumulative files. So their final student records that we have after the students graduate, we have more of them than you would ever believe, and we're running out of storage. And staff files are the same way. We're required to keep staff files for an exceedingly long period of time. Literacy intervention materials, it received a first, second, third, fifth, and sixth choice. Rekeying the keys at Mary Ellen Henderson to be on the master key set with Meridian and Mount Daniel had one fifth choice, two sixth choice, a ninth, and an 11th. Replacing musical instruments had one second choice, two fourth-place choices, two 10th-place choices. And then replacing the hot water heaters at Mary Ellen Henderson has a second choice, two seventh-place choices, one ninth, and one 11th. And then lastly, the security cameras, additional security cameras, has a third-place choice, a fifth, a seventh, and an eighth, and a ninth. So to summarize all of that together, this chart shows all of those charts that we went through, and it shows how many votes in each of those places each item received. So from there, that information was taken, and points were awarded as follows. So if it was a first choice, it got 11 points. Second choice, 10 points, all the way down to, if it was an 11th choice, it got one point. So this is the opposite of golf scoring, in that the highest number of points means it had more of the first, second, third-choice rankings. So this chart shows the items in order based on the points received using that scoring methodology. So in that case, you can see the item with the highest number of points was the literacy intervention materials, then the electric buses, the stadium field house refurbishment, musical instruments, and all the way down. So this really summarizes all of those prior charts.
Ms. Henderson?
Thank you for sharing, compiling this information. It's interesting to see. With all due respect to my colleagues, I am far more interested in what staff thinks about the overall rank order and if this ranking comports with staff's priority.
I'll, I'll just say that everything on this list ended up above the line, and so they're all priorities to us, but I think this represents a pretty good reflection of what our thinking is as well. So we are very, very much aligned. When we saw this rank order, I think our comments to each other were, hey, we're close. So I think, I think we're good.
That's great. And are there any things on this list where the risk is higher of not doing it? Like, for example, I see rekey Henderson to master key set is, came in, in last in this assessment of ranking, and I'm, I don't know if not rekeying it is a security issue versus if it's a convenience issue or something else. So I'm just curious if there are any things on here that are higher risk if we don't do them.
I, I think from a safety, security standpoint, the security cameras and the rekeying are really important. That, it seems silly that to rekey on the same key, but it really is a safety, security issue, particularly when we have people coming and going. And, and then, you know, obviously, a lot of these things don't hit the classroom specifically, and that's, that's probably good because we want our operational dollars to be hitting the classroom more than our one-time funds because we want them to be recurring. I would think not getting the literacy intervention materials would be problematic. But as I look at the bottom, you know, the, the security monitoring, I think that's really important. I, I think, I, I know if everything's important, nothing's important, but I think that's why we've got this list, and then there's the below-the-line stuff in the next couple of slides. And those were the things that we felt like if we didn't do the ones below the line, we'd probably be okay. I'd really like, if we could, to be able to do everything that's on this list. And we do have the funds available to do it. But, but that being said, you know, it certainly is the will of the board, and we appreciate your, appreciate your feedback, and this was good to see.
I appreciate that, and I just have one more question. It's still not clear to me if there are It's still not clear to me if there are significant consequences that we should be aware of knocking any of these off of this list.
If we don't, I mean, I could go each one by one. The consequences are digitizing student and staff files. It really is an efficiency measure for us, and I think the risk of not doing that would be spending a lot of money and time and energy and effort on something that we should be able to digitize. The security cameras, upgrading those, adding some, could really be a security risk if we didn't do those. You know, the hybrid vans, part of that is greening our white fleet. We have vans that are falling apart, that are not hybrid, and the general government staff that actually repair those are begging for us to take care of them. I think we could be in a situation where, you know, if we didn't replace them and they went down, that we might not be able to get our kids to outplace services in an efficient way. We probably would need to use a different service to get them there. The technology monitoring actually probably, as I look at this list, probably has the biggest impact. This helps us with ransom attacks. It helps us with, you know, any kind of infiltration of bad behavior. So this is a group that we worked with on another, earlier this year, on something else, and so having their services would be huge for us and probably keep us out of some pretty significant issues, potential issues electronically. The hot water heater is going to have to be replaced. This is a matter of whether we do it now or later. I think the challenge there is do we wait till it blows out and then we flood the building? So I'd rather do that now. So, and then the stadium fieldhouse is, you know, that is really, we have the capital money, and so really, to do it right, it really would require us to use all of the extra operational funds. If we don't get the operational funds to do that, there's a lot of, there are, not a lot, there are a few things we can do to cut back on that project, but it will look pretty much the same and we probably won't be able to do all of the work inside that we had hoped. And it's not to suggest that we would continue to be hazardous or anything like that, but it would be problematic. The electric buses, if we don't get the electric buses, we don't get the electric buses. But if we don't get the money now for this, we lose the $400,000 in grants, and that would be really important to us. So that kind of gives you a sense. Musical instrument replacement, that's a really nice thing to do, and we've got some money to do it. And I think because we've got the money, we should probably put some money into the music program. So I don't know if that helps or hurts or complicates the matter more, but that's kind of where we are.
I know it helps. Thank you.
Ms. Murphy.
Just had a question about, if you could describe a little bit more about what the technology security monitoring entails, because I was trying to wrap my head around what that looks like for a one-time expenditure. Since we just had the presentation on, you know, on technology security, I just didn't know what this was in addition to what we have existing.
Yeah, I'll let Ms. Michael talk about Arctic Wolf.
Thank you so much. So Arctic Wolf is a vendor that provides monitoring service for us potentially and for many other clients. And one of the things that we have determined is we have very good equipment, right, and we're very great in terms of being state-of-the-art. But in order to really be more secure, right, we really do need additional support in terms of monitoring. Like, one of the things is we have a great technology team, right, but there are a limited number of people, and then they're also not here on evenings, weekends, and other components. So in terms of using this funding, it would be the first time we've purchased a service like this. At this point, we think it would be one time for the fiscal year because we really need to assess, is the benefit that we received worth the investment we make? And is it something that, long-term, we really do think would improve our security posture? Or is this just something we should do now based on our current circumstances?
Thank you.
I actually have a follow-up question to that. So this is, this would be like trying it for a year, and then if we felt like it was really worthwhile, then it would be something we would roll into the regular budget?
That is correct. If we determine that it's really benefit, really beneficial and will improve our security posture, then yes, we could come back and ask for funding to have it continue.
Got it. But this is just a one-year trial, sort of?
Correct. It's just a one-year.
Got it. Okay.
Chair Tyce, I would, I just would only add to that conversation to say that they did audition with us once already this year and did a really great job for us. So it's not as though we're going in without having some experience with them before. And the service and support and care that they provided us during a situation earlier in the year really sort of put us on this path of thinking, you know, adding this extra layer would be really important. So it's not a shot in the dark, I guess, is what I'm saying.
That's helpful. Thank you. Anything else before we continue?
All right. The last section that we have are the items that were the lower priority items based on leadership's opinion. So the first item or question that we had was, of all of the items that we have in terms of a one-time funding list, were there items from the one-time lower priority list that should be moved to the higher priority list? And there were two items that received votes. Cell phone lockers or pouches, there were two people who voted that that should be moved from lower priority to higher priority. And then there were also two votes for special education professional development. The feedback questions that we had related to that were prioritizing professional development for staff and a question about could we use title money for this? We have committed our title money for this year, but we have professional development funds that could be used to prioritize this PD, which is why this is on our lower priority list, because we felt we had other funding opportunities. The second related question was also related to special ed professional development, acknowledging that it might decrease future legal costs. And then there was feedback here too about the West Falls development. On one of these lower-funded items was additional support for our legacy Grove. And our legacy Grove really appears to have been impacted by runoff from the development. So our suggestion in terms of that is really rather than fund that at this point in time, to go back to the developer and to seek support from them in terms of the impact to that legacy Grove. So there was support for that here. And then the last question or piece of feedback was a concern about the security risks of yonder pouches. Should we end up going in that direction?
Can I just add to that? We have purchased some yonder pouches already, and we are piloting those in classrooms at the middle and at the high school. Each teacher at this point has five, in case there's an issue where a kid isn't putting their, their, well, middle school if a kid has a phone, but at the high school, if they're not putting it in the slot, then after a certain number of occurrences, we do have the yonder pouches. But we have not, to my knowledge, needed to use those at this point because our kids are doing very well about putting their technology away. So thank you.
And then the last question in this section is, we also asked, were there any items that the leadership had put on the higher priority list that could or should be moved to the lower priority list? And there was one vote for the marquee sign at the secondary campus and one vote for digitizing staff and student files. And the related questions there are deferring to leadership on this and not feeling strongly about the digitizing files. This comment really talks about if the files are used for assessments, these are really, as I indicated earlier, the students' cumulative files or the employee files that we have to keep forever after an employee leaves. And then there was also a piece of feedback about the marquee signs seeming like a nice to have.
Right. Any, thank you so much, Ms. Michael. Any further comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I guess my question is, so now what? So you have this information, now what?
So when we look at all of the items on this funding, as Dr. Noonan indicated, one of the items that really has a short timeframe in terms of making a decision are the electric buses. The EPA grant that we were awarded, we need to have a decision and that funding committed by November. So we will be able to bring back a potential budget amendment to the school board at the November meeting for your action based on the feedback that we received tonight in terms of these items.
Sure. Ms. Silverman.
How quickly do you think we would get an answer from city council if we went to them asking for that to be their funding project?
I'm not sure. We have an upcoming budget finance committee meeting, so we probably would raise it at that point.
Yep. After this discussion, I would probably rank things very differently than I did, and so I'm curious if there's an opportunity for that or if that would be helpful.
Or, yeah, I mean, my question is also is, would that even be necessary if we feel like everything, generally speaking, there were very few, very few votes for things moving on either side of the line, and if we feel like there's a good opportunity or good, I mean, there's a good likelihood that we'll be able to fund it all, is further feedback needed from the board at this point?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. For us, one, I think looking at the things that two school board members wish to move up, one was cell phone lockers and pouches, and the other, special education professional development, knowing that we likely can handle the special education professional development without having to add money to the professional development fund with one-time money, hopefully takes that off the table because we can absorb a lot of that. The question then is around the cell phone lockers and pouches, and I wonder if not taking action on that now would be okay since the board hasn't decided which direction you all are going to go with cell phones at this point and that we do have some that we're piloting. Knowing that that's the case and that the rank order is what it is, I would appreciate just sort of a general sense of the board tonight to know that with the hope, I guess it's the hope being the strategy, which is not a strategy, but hope that the council would be interested in supporting the buses, would you all be sort of in general okay with funding everything above the line? Because I do believe that we have the money to do that. I do believe that if we do that, we would still have enough in the bank to be able to pay for things that came up in case of emergency. We have a year now that we will end up with some more laps at the end of this year, whether we like it or not, that just sort of happens. And also that we appreciate you all going through this exercise. And for those of you that have been on the board in the past, you know that we've never done this before. So typically, it's just we bring you a list and we say, here's what we need, and everybody sort of talks about it for 20 minutes and then says, okay. So this time, you got to rank order them, you got to kind of talk about them a little bit more. So I'm hopeful that maybe we could just take the overall rank order list that starts with literacy intervention materials and then down to the rekeying of the master set and put that, not those things into a budget amendment, but create an amendment that moves money from that into these one-time needs. And we would bring that to you for approval at the November meeting. And if you wanted to talk about it some more, we do have a work session between now and then, we could add that to the work session, but if you're comfortable with this list, I think that would be our preference.
Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, this was a fun exercise, and you did, you and Ms. Michael answered my question on the special ed PD. I would say that would be a pretty high priority on my list, so I'm glad it's going to be funded. Regarding the stadium fieldhouse, is $600,000 a reasonable estimate of getting it in, like, what we want to do with it?
That's half. So you might remember that we also got money from the capital improvement plan by moving the Oak Street projects and reducing the amount of need at Oak Street, we were able to get some funding from the general government, city council. So this picks up the other half. So it's a nice joint project.
All right. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Any other, Ms. Silverman?
After listening to the discussion and based on what Ms. Henderson had said, that was complicated, sorry, if this could be added to the work session in case there are any, maybe not a full discussion, but any tweaks to any of this might be helpful. I don't know if others feel the same way.
I think we can get feedback from, as we get closer and make sure we put it on the agenda if there's needed, if it's needed, sure. Ms. Henderson.
It's not fully formed. I'm generally supportive of the staff's desire to fund everything above the line. That's not an issue. The question come, the question I have is if the city government does not fund or fund at a level, then I do think it is important to reopen the ranking and have a more fulsome conversation about that because then we'll have to make some choices that we don't have to make yet.
That makes sense.
So, if I may, so that's a good, a good thing to raise. So just looking at my calendar very quickly, Friday, the 18th is the next budget and finance meeting. I will, however, pick up the phone tomorrow or Thursday and start talking about this with the city manager and kind of see where we are, and I can talk to a couple of council members. But I think there's going to be broad resonance for helping us out on these buses. But in case not, then maybe we could put it back on the agenda and say, all right, let's figure out what we do now. We got a punt.
People seem, I'm getting head knives, but generally comfortable with this approach? Okay. Fantastic. Thank you so much. Are we ready to move on to 8.03 FY 2026 budget priorities? Back to Ms., straight to Ms. Michael. Yes, thank you.
So typically, it is fall and it's the start of our budget process for the next year. Typically, we have a discussion in terms of priorities prior to the budget season formally starting and prior to us receiving enrollment projections, which we will, from Dr. Keith Waters of the Stephen Fuller Institute at the November school board meeting. So in order to kind of kick off that budget discussion, we wanted to share these preliminary projected cost drivers for FY '26. So on this chart, all of the items that are in bold are in fixed costs, meaning we won't be able to avoid them as we move into the next year. So in the top section, investing in our people, you see we have a projected cost for step increase, which is part of our collective bargaining agreement. As is a cost of living adjustment, this is currently estimated at 2.5%. The final cost of living adjustment will be based on the CPI that will come out later this month in October, so that's 1.2 million. And we have projected health insurance rate increases here of $400,000. That's about 10%, which is our typical budget projection point at the beginning of the budget process. Including our collective bargaining agreement, we also have an increase in pay for homebound teachers, and we're also expecting a small rate change for city retirement. Then the other items in this section is Virginia Retirement System. It's the second year of rates, so we don't project a change there. And we're not currently projecting a change in our traditional retirement program. And then lastly, we are factoring in that we'll potentially be able to capture $400,000 in terms of salary lapse. And salary lapse is savings that we see when more experienced teachers who are higher on the pay scale retire and leave the system and we hire newer teachers who have less education, therefore a lower salary. So that's a projected savings there as part of this cost. In terms of the IB teaching and learning section, the first item in here is based on enrollment growth. So this is purely an estimate based on how much funding we spent in this current year. So based on that additional growth, it would be an additional increase of $500,000. We currently have a couple of positions that are funded with one-time funding, and should those be made permanent, we would need another $110,000 for a secondary English for speakers of other languages position to continue, as well as a halftime advanced academic coordinator position to continue. And we also know that we are short funds in terms of our textbook adoption funding, so there's $100,000 there as well. Under wellness, equity, and belonging, we're currently using grant funding from the general government's ARPA funding for psychologist services. That's currently $110,000 for that cost, should we wish to continue that. And then in resource management and continuous improvement, we have some unavoidable costs. The first is increases in our property, vehicle, and liability insurance, and that includes workers' compensation. And then we also have contractual cost increases. So those are items that we are under a contract for. They include, for example, things like Securitas, Power School, Schoology, Frontline, all of our systems like that, as well as services we purchase from other surrounding jurisdictions. So our school nurses, for example, that we get from the Fairfax Health Department, or tuition that we pay to Arlington Career Center, or Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology in Fairfax, for example. And then the last section is we have $100,000 for board initiatives. So when you add all of those items together, that total So when you add all of those items together, that totals 3.4 million for projected preliminary increase in expenditures for the following year. Just for reference, to help us as we start thinking through this process, the transfer increase that we received in this current year was 3.4 million. And I also wanted to just remind people listening that we do have $336,517 in recurring state funding that we'll be able to add to the budget next year. And that's because the state adopted their budget this year after the school board did, and we had set funding aside for this year in terms of a staffing reserve, but that revenue will be available when we look into the next year's budget development. So at a high level, these are just some of the preliminary costs that we're projecting for our FY 26 budget process.
Okay, thank you so much. Questions from the board, Ms. Silverman?
Thank you, Ms. Michael. Can you explain what the reserve for school board initiatives might include?
So it really could be any of the items that the school board wishes to bring forward. Generally, in the past, we haven't included that flexibility from the beginning, and we've received feedback that the board would like to have an opportunity to more actively bring stuff at the beginning of the budget process. So we've really included that this year, listening to the feedback that we've received.
Yes, I recall those conversations, and thank you for listing that as a line item.
Just one addition to that, as you're thinking about what you all might want to do as part of your initiatives, the one thing I would say to avoid is adding anything that's already in the collective, adding two things that are in the collective bargaining agreement.
Got it. Ms. Anderson?
This may be a silly question, because I've noticed a line for textbooks, and I know most of our curricula is digital, so could you just clarify that, please?
I would be happy to. So we have a textbook adoption policy with the state, and they come forward and they tell us what are the new textbooks for the year, right? And generally, our most recent costs for those items have exceeded the funding that we've had available. So for this current year, we've adopted new English Language Arts materials, and you're right, some of those are texts, and some of those are other components. And then the next adoption that we're looking at is either math or science, right? And typically, that's a combination of online materials as well as textual documents.
That's helpful, thank you. So we're not talking about the big old textbooks we all carried around, but just the actual curricular material cost. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about this document or this presentation?
I just also wanted to let the board know this is also an opportunity, if you had sort of broader, general priorities or thoughts on the budget process. I don't think we're anywhere near ready for, for the minutia, or for something that would be more of a general budget question that we do in our regular budget process. But if anybody had any overarching, larger macro-level budget priorities or thoughts, you're welcome to share them. All right.
I would just say, usually, it's compensation. That's always where the board goes first, is to make sure that our employees are compensated. This will be the first year that, that is baked, so it'll be interesting to see how these conversations go. So consider yourself kicked off into the budget season.
Woo-hoo, let's do it. Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Michael. This was so helpful. Really appreciate all of your efforts, and your organization, and your clear presentations. It's always, just always really enjoy how you, how you explain things to those of us who are not so fiscally minded. All right. Section nine, item 9.1, Future Agenda Topics. Does anyone on the board have any future agenda items they would like the board to consider on a future, future agenda? Okay. All right, we will move to section 10, and item 10.1, Superintendent's Report.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Under Wellness Equity and Belonging, tomorrow is walk, bike, and roll to school day. We hope many of our students are planning to take alternate modes to school and to travel safely. The Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, in partnership with Bike Falls Church and the Meridian Bike Club Committee, have been great advocates for this program. I wanted to brief the board tonight a little bit about Kids at Hope. I think everybody here is familiar with it, but we are fostering, in the City of Falls Church School, it's a caring culture where all adults believe in all students, and work together in supportive and collaborative environments to make FCCPS the best school division in the country. We formalize this work under a simple structure called a Culture of Hope. The goal of creating cultures of hope is not to add more to one's plate, but to define and strengthen the plate itself through common language understandings and expectations of how we treat one another, and become more intentional about creating welcoming and inclusive spaces for students and staff. This work directly supports our strategic plan, particularly in the area of wellness, equity, and belonging, and aligns to our commitment to equity. The cultural framework places students at the center of everything that we do by adopting a belief that all students are capable of success with no exceptions. And as you walk through our buildings, one of the things you'll see is that in every schoolwork room, classroom, and main office has a Kids at Hope poster displayed, and every employee has one of their 10 pins. And I don't know if you all have your 10 pins or not, but hopefully you got one recently, and if not, we will get you one. And the 10 represents that we believe that all students can achieve, no exceptions. And when we ask that question of employees that come in, from a 1 to 10, do you think that all kids can achieve at the highest levels? And we want to hear 10, right? So the Kids at Hope and Treasure Hunter pledges are also set each day over the morning announcements in each of our schools. We are expanding our partnerships with Securely Home, and you may have seen the morning announcements, or received a parent email about this, following a successful pilot at Meridian High School last year. We are rolling out Securely at Home to all student laptops across the district. Securely Home is a tool designed to support students' digital wellness by allowing families to monitor web traffic on FCCPS-issued laptops. Families enrolled in the system will automatically receive a weekly activity report on the student in their household. Parents received an invitation yesterday to set up their Securely Home account. Under Resource Management and Continuous Improvement, I just wanted to call your attention to Berman Park updates. This obviously is not a school project, but affects students and families in our schools. In partnership with the general government, we're sharing information about work schedules to take place where Berman Park Trail crosses Kent Street, Ellison Street, Irving Street, South Springs Street, and Lee Court. Safety upgrades include narrowing the crossing, colored pavement, ADA ramps, marking, signage, and lighting. The start date, and the first road, first road closures will, for construction, are going to start on October 28th, weather permitting. Ellison Street and Kent Street Trail Crossing will be the first, and when the project is complete, FCCPS will be able to update the Oak Street Tiger Trail to highlight additional safe routes to school from the neighborhood. In terms of communication and engagement, FCCPS Pager Assist toolbar is out and on our website. It is the blue circle at the top of each page. It is an accessible tool that allows visitors to adjust several viewing options to meet their personal needs. Users can change the fonts, adjust the size and spacing, highlight elements, and add a reading bar. And there's even a special font called Open Dyslexic that is easier to read. Tomorrow is the Little City Scramble, and many of us who are playing golf are very excited about supporting our education foundation and the Mustang Athletic Boosters. Under IB and IB Teaching and Learning, Our Schools Make a Difference, Oak Street Elementary unveiled a community artwork last month. Artist-in-resident Mark Robarge, who you saw a picture of this evening in one of our presentations, led ceramic workshops in each and every student's classroom, grades three through five, as well as their teachers. And Robarge made ceramic workshop, painted fish. There were 675 unique fish that were inspired by trips run, the small stream adjacent to Oak Street Elementary, which runs all the way to the Atlantic Ocean. The fish are a metaphor for life in our waters and represent a connection to our local community and our global community. The art is at Seaton Lane, entrance at Oak, entrance at Oak Street, and you can even see it from the street if you walk by. And then lastly, one of the things we're really excited about is this year, we are teaching ASL, or American Sign Language, to our students at Jesse Thackeray Preschool. Two of our ASL teachers who work at Henderson and Meridian have added preschool to their course load, and the students are picking up the signs quickly, and teachers are enjoying the opportunity to spend time with preschool. So thank you for the opportunity to share the superintendent's report, and that's it for me tonight.
Thank you so much, Dr. Noonan. Moving on to section 11, and item 11.1, Board and Student Liaison Comments. We will hear from our board members and student liaison about the various meetings and engagements everyone attended. We will start with Mr. Anderson.
All right. With the school year back in session, we're on a roll with it. I attended the advisory board for the Recreation and Parks Department, and, you know, they talked about sport court use, particularly for pickleball, and some how things are going for the fellows' property. And one thing I would like to highlight is the two student reps on there. One is continuing on from last year, then they finalized their agreement with Share the Air, which is a no-smoking campaign in public parks, and so they've been able to get signage. I think they were going to try to get some high school students to help put up signage. I think that's still a work in progress, but it's nice to see how they've moved that project forward. I also attended the Advanced Academics Advisory Committee, and things are moving apace in that, in that part of the, in that part of the district. The Oak Street staff have made sure to test those students who didn't have various scores on file, and so they're making sure that everyone is, has the opportunity to be part of the advanced academics program there. And I also, Ms. Tyson and I, had our office hours at Northside Social last week, and we had various, various community members come and express, you know, concerns, and also, there was one, one person who came, and she had just moved to the system with her kids and her family, and she just came and just wanted to chat and see, see what's going on in the system, so.
Ms. Anderson?
The secondary campus PTA had a wonderful event, all the PTAs jointly had a wonderful event at the secondary campus late last month, which a number of folks attended to really talk about and dig into how we can, as a community and a society, help ramp down the stress and pressure our high schoolers feel. So it was a really fantastic event with a number of school staff participating and helping facilitate sessions, which was really helpful. I know there's a number of social and fundraising events being sponsored by the, all the PTAs over the coming months, so I encourage folks to attend and participate in those if they can, including fundraisers to support the all-night, it's not the all-night graduation, whatever they call it, the graduation celebration for seniors now, senior spectacular. So that's happening. And then the Business and Education Committee had its first meeting of this school year recently, and talked about some of the priorities they'll be looking at for the school year.
Great. Ms. Silverman?
Thank you. On September 18th, I attended the Health and Wellness Meeting, and we discussed various school board policies that might relate to the committee, such as the personal cellphone use and the school-administered laptop use. Additionally, we did a review of last year and some of the things that we worked on, and discussed some of the ideas that the committee might want to take this year, and including any budget topics that they might want to bring forth to the school board.
Thank you. For my update, I will share, as Mr. Anderson shared, we had our office hours, and we, just to elaborate a little more, we had one parent from the Athletic Boosters come inquire about the scoreboard, which we've already covered tonight, so hopefully they'll, they'll appreciate our conversation. The second was the new resident, which was just really a delight to just get to meet somebody new to the city and have a good conversation about what's going on in our schools. We also had a parent who had concerned about, was concerned about technology, continued concerns about technology use at the middle school. And fourth was an employee who had questions about the implementation of our new pay scale. We do always really enjoy engaging with the community, and wanted to thank those who came out, and encourage others to come and join us in the future. The dates and information can be found on the school board website, and I also really appreciate other school board members joining me this year. We're trying to share the, share the fun, so we'll make sure to communicate to the community who to look out for. It won't always be the same two members. Other updates I had was, big news from the Mary Riley Stiles Public Library. They have the appointment of a new permanent library director. Her name is Megan Doltzler, is coming from Arlington County Public Library, and her first day with the city was yesterday, I believe. So, welcome, Ms. Doltzler, if you happen to be listening. The Public School Leaders Network, I had the opportunity to join Dr. Noonan, Dr. Wright, and Ms. Heddings at the Public School Leaders Network meeting last month, and Ms. Heddings and Dr. Noonan did a fantastic job updating the group of school leaders on the upcoming changes to the state's accreditation process, which are, in my personal opinion, pretty substantial and concerning changes. It was really great to see our own people educating their peers and leading a really rich discussion on state issues. So thank you to Dr. Noonan and Ms. Heddings for that. Last night, the Faith Alliance for Climate Solutions Climate Crisis Forum, I was also attended, and I wasn't able to stay for the full event, but it was yet another opportunity to showcase how beautiful and sustainable our awesome new high school is. And I'd say a big thank you to Dr. Noonan and student panelist Emily Morrow for representing Falls Church so well. That is my personal update, but I would also share an update from Mr. Gould, who is not in attendance today. He attended the first ESOL meeting, where they engaged in a great conversation about the successes and upcoming challenges of the ESOL program. Dr. Jen Santiago provided a data update to the committee with respect to enrollment and diversity of the program. The committee will be focusing on budget recommendations, policy recommendations, as well as trying to identify ways that communication for both student engagement and family engagement can be improved, given the number of communication methods utilized in the district. And I will also add, in terms of the ESOL committee, there is an opening. We did have one person have to step down, and so there is an opening on the committee, and applications will be accepted until October 22nd. You can find more information in morning announcements, or by contacting me, or Ms. Goodell.
Ms. Murphy?
Thank you. So I have no new reports from the Daycare Advisory Board. I reported on the meeting during the last school board meeting, and so our next meeting is tomorrow. And I actually have nothing to report from the Special Education Advisory Committee. We attempted to meet last night, but unfortunately did not have a quorum, because four people were unavailable due to illness, and one was outside the country. This appears to have been an unprecedented, unfortunate occurrence, and, or at least in, in Ms. Sharp's memory. So, you know, we're trying to figure out ways to convey the information that was intended to be conveyed last night, and, you know, again, since it was just last night, there's no real answer to that yet, but, you know, the committee is definitely, is working on finding a solution, and to figure out how best to deal with that situation going forward. And that's it.
Hey. Ms. Rice?
Thank you. The quarter's wrapping up soon, so within the next couple weeks, students are finalizing their homework assignments, in that sense. And Club Fair, we had a couple weeks ago, that was successful. So I think most clubs have started up by now, new members have joined, and leadership is established, which is exciting. We also have had the Mustang Ambassadors visiting freshman stable groups a couple times over the last couple months, which has been helpful to acclimate the freshmen to the school and in the freshman, in the stable groups that I've been visiting. I think that's been super helpful for the students. And tomorrow, high school students, freshmen through juniors, are taking the P S A on the short day.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. We can now move to section 12, Approval of Minutes. I would like to, again, solicit a unanimous consent for items 12.1 and 12.2, Approval of Minutes, for April 25th, 2023, and April, and May 9th, 2023, respectively. Thank you, and the consent agenda passes. And please note, section 13, Materials for Board Review. Item 13.1 is an update on current FCCPS enrollment, and item 13.2 is the school board meeting schedule for the school year. And with that, we are done with our meeting. Thank you to all of the staff here tonight for yet another long day, serving our schools, and to the public for watching live or at a later date. Thank you for engaging, and good night.